Notice is hereby given that the that a meeting of the Salem City Council Committee on Government Services co-posted with the committee the whole. Meeting with the Traffic and Parking Commission on Thursday, May 5th, 2022 at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing the traffic, violence and pedestrian safety and safety issues caused by illegal dirt bikes via remote participation in accordance with the chapter 20 of Acts 2021. And as amended by chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, the subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend the meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Click the link below, password 676752 or telephone. Webber ID 81786009162. Every effort we make will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we may will post on the city of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for the effective communication such as sign language interpreter, assistive listening device or print materials in digital format or reasonable modification in program services policies or activities may contact the city of Salem ADA Coordinator as soon as possible, no less than two business days before the meeting, program or event. Present, we have all members of the Government Services Committee along with Councillors McCarthy, Prozdniewski, Merkel. And I believe that's it. We also have Beth Ann Cornell. Did I miss somebody?
Morcello.
Oh, Madam President, Councillor President, Mar- Morcello. We also have Beth Ann Cornell from the School Committee, Dr. Strick, Superintendent Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker. I will turn it over to Michelle to take attendance on her end.
Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission to order and I'll take attendance here. We've got Eric Pepetti.
Here.
Jaime Garmendia. Lieutenant Tucker.
I'm here.
And just for the record, we're meeting, we're missing Jeff Schwartz, but we do have a quorum, so we can get started.
Thank you. And I'll note that Councillor Cardy has also joined us. Okay, I want to thank everybody for for your time tonight and for agreeing to join us here today. As we've discussed, I think I've I've talked with a lot of you offline, but we've had a an uptick in this country, really, not just in, not just in Salem, but in the United States and pedestrian deaths. Particularly over the last 10 years where other other countries around the world have gone down, America has gone up. We've also seen that locally here in Salem. You know, cyclists and 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 cars, but also cars and cars and pedestrians and cars and cars. We saw, we saw a horrible one last night. And there's, there's a lot of things that we want to just sort of start, start this conversation and see what what we can do as a community. This shouldn't be on on law enforcement to to sort of sort these things out on the back end and figure out why they happened. There's things that we can do on our end to make our streets safer and to to figure out what what can be done and to ultimately potentially reach a place where we as a as a city maybe could could commit to looking at something like zero, zero fatalities, zero injuries in Salem as our as our chief goal. And we have Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker from the Police Department on to talk through just some basics about what what they've seen, what were the accidents that happened, what sort of patterns, if any, exist. We have Beth Ann Cornell from the School Committee and Doctors Wright to sort of just talk, talk through a little bit of, or to be, to be part of this conversation around, you know, just what's happening with with our kids getting to school and what that, what that looks like and how that fits into this. And we have the Traffic and Parking Commission here to be a part of this conversation. Tanya has has and Eric have put together a presentation just about what something what other communities have done. This is, this started in Sweden and it has 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 moved over to many, many communities throughout the United States and has had great impacts on on a lot of different places. So I guess just before I get started, Beth Ann, if you want to talk just real briefly about, you know, what Beth Ann asked, asked to join this meeting and we appreciate it. I think this is a big part of this conversation. If you want to just talk real briefly about why you asked to be on this.
Sure. Thank you so much, Ty. And hi, everybody. This is actually a perfect moment for this conversation, I think, for the with the, to have with the Salem Public Schools because we're talking a lot about our kids walking to school. So I think what we're really looking for as a district is just to partner with the city to make this a walkable place for all kids, but from our, all people, but from our perspective for our kids. And we've looked at some other models. Needham is a really example, a good example of just a real collaborative effort between the school district and the city to, you know, teach walking safety, biking safety. There's all kinds of interesting community work that they do there. And so we just want to be able to collaborate with, you know, other folks in the city to make, you know, to develop safe walking and biking routes for our kids. Partnering on crossing guard placement, you know, they can benefit both adults and kids. So we're just, I think, speaking for Doctors Wright to that we're just happy to be part of this initial conversation so that we can, you know, all collectively get to a place where we feel great about, you know, both our kids and our other community members walking safely through our streets.
Thank you. Doctor's right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that? Think that then.
No, I mean, I think Beth Ann did a great job of, you know, stating our purpose for being here. We want to, we think that this is a great place for us to collaborate with the community, with city officials and with the police. As we, you know, we want to encourage more young people walking to and from school. And as, you know, we, we and, you know, given the challenges with transportation that the city faces, you know, we want to make sure that as many young people have that option to walk safely to and from school. So, you know, look, I'm very appreciative that this can be a community dialogue because you know, serving our kids, I think, is a collective responsibility that we all share. So thanks for the invite.
I'll, I'll just, just, I think I should add this before that we will cover the pedestrian safety and the and the road safety issues. Front of this meeting, that's where the majority of these invitees are for, are here for. And then we'll talk about the dirt bikes for those interested in hearing about that after, at the end of the meeting. And then I also should add that this is the beginning of, I look at this as the beginning of a longer conversation around around road safety. This isn't something we're going to solve here in in an hour long meeting where it's something that we do have a lot of work ahead of us if we are serious about tackling this, but this is the beginning of that conversation. I guess just to kick things off then with with Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker, if you could talk through just what you've seen around, around some of the recent incidents that we've seen in Salem, if there's any trends as to where where those are happening or what sort of things you're seeing.
Thank you, Councillor. I mean, I think before I, before we get into the data, I'll say as a newcomer to Salem, you know, I was disappointed at the level of the dangerousness of riding my bike. I I love riding my bike and it's, it's definitely if one is not on the bike paths, it seems a little bit fraught. The in terms of of recent crashes, recent pedestrian crashes, I think, on the one hand, Salem has tended to follow the rest of Massachusetts trends, both in terms of motor vehicle, motor vehicle crashes in general and motor vehicle versus pedestrian crashes. We have seen recently an uptick in Salem that I think is concerning. And of course, we look to see what the commonality is in those, those vehicle versus versus pedestrian crashes. And, you know, other than the presence of a car, there, there is no one factor that 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 goes across all of them or even the more serious ones. You know, many of the pedestrians were in crosswalks, many weren't in crosswalks. They seem to take place all over the city. Obviously, where vehicle speeds increase, both the seriousness of the of the accident increases and the frequency of accidents, the seriousness of crashes increased. And certainly, speed is a, you know, it's an exacerbating factor in all crashes. I'll let, I'll let Lieutenant Tucker get into the more granular data or the actual incidents per se, but I don't, I don't disagree in any way with your characterization.
So year to date, there's been about 11 I'll say real incidents. We do have a couple of other reports that were reported after the fact and they there isn't much information. An incident, you know, an incident that occurred with a vehicle and a pedestrian collided. When the pedestrian left the scene, didn't want any assistance from anyone. The driver felt they should report it. Those are, those are a little tricky because we, we're not getting both sides. We don't really know what happened. But of the ones I'll say the real ones, we've got a couple in parking lots. I would say three, four, five, six out of the 11 were at night. Varying degrees of roadway lighting. In some cases, we had one, one. We did have the fatal crash, fatal pedestrian accident crash at the front of Walmart. That was two pedestrians crossing. The driver noticed the one pedestrian who made it to the median and didn't see the other pedestrian. She was struck and killed. Lighting is a bit of a factor there. There is a crossing facility there, but the pedestrians opted not to use it. We do have one of a January 12th, an operator on Lafayette Street was turning onto Dow Street, heavy traffic. A eight-year-old stepped off the curb and was brushed and fell down. That would be, the operator was cited for failing to yield. That was a child was using a crosswalk. Inattention and traffic volume, I think, led to that one. Very, no injury, basically. We had one February 3rd, Washington and Norman. An elderly woman crossing between the flagpoles and the bank on the corner of New Derby. Operator turned right, possibly right on red when I, we don't really know. We do have that incident on camera, but I don't think the light cycle was captured. And she was hit and knocked down, serious injuries. She will recover. The operator had no license and fled the scene, was later identified and charged. February 11th, by Waters and Browns on Derby Street, a driver heading eastbound on Derby, wanted to enter a parking space in front of Waters and Brown. She reported solar glare, which at that time of day in that location, I have to, it doesn't state in the report. I have to think it maybe was in her mirrors, facing east. And there was a bicycle approaching from the rear. By some reports at high speed, it was electric bicycle. But she turned across the bike lane there, the it's a unprotected bike lane and didn't hit the cyclist, but he veered off into the sidewalk and hit a wall and got some moderate injuries. He'll be okay. The bike was destroyed. March 5th. There was a pedestrian crossing near law, crossing Loring Avenue, Lincoln. In the dark, roadway was lighted, but could probably, I think, I think we could say anywhere could be improved. Operator possibly speeding. I don't think that's been established. Initially left the scene, returned and was charged with leaving the scene. Serious injuries. There is a signalized crosswalk at Harrison, but the pedestrian didn't use it. They just crossed. They were trying to get to a taxi that was on Lincoln. Same night. Washington at Norman. The pedestrian crossing from the Derby Restaurant towards the Dunkin' Donuts, but then veered off his, his ultimate destination was the flagpole area across from the post office. The there were two vehicles on New Derby facing Norman. When the light turned green, one vehicle accelerated to try to beat the other vehicle. Didn't see the pedestrian. He wasn't technically in the crosswalk, but I would say the lighting conditions there are pretty good. Generally speaking, down there. Serious injuries. Another driver that left the scene was a return and turned himself in and was charged. That party is recovering or has recovered.
If I can interrupt, I think that that motorists was charged both with the negligent operation and the leading of the scene. Am I correct? Yeah.
Yes. Yep, negligent operation. March 7th. This was Loring Avenue near the entrance to Thousand Loring Avenue. This was in the dark and light rain. We had the operator and an independent witness who was going the other direction, both at the same statement that the gentleman attempted to jog across the street. The lighting there is poor and the weather conditions contributed somewhat. The operator states you didn't see him. And he was struck, serious injuries. He is recovering. But very significant injuries there. April 12th, the bicyclist was riding south in the Breakdolly on Highland Avenue, which is the proper direction. There was a vehicle exiting the parking lot of the North Shore Veterinary Clinic. 207 Highland. Struck the cyclist at very slow speed, knocked her down. There was an ankle injury. The operator stated she hadn't, didn't see the cyclist. Which we found odd because of the you're really only going to look to your left and the cyclist was going in the proper direction.
Ironically, that's the location of the crash last night.
No, well, I'm sorry, Chief. No, this one's down. This is down before Pep Boys. So you haven't quite, you haven't quite made it up there yet. This one was at.
I thought that Animal Clinic was was across the street.
No, you know, my apologies, Chief. I gave you a, I gave you a sheet with the wrong address, so that was my fault. No, this was 207, this should say 207 Highland.
I get it.
My apologies.
Lieutenant Tucker, can I jump in real quick?
Yep.
Do we, do we sort the data in any, any sort of way? Has that been something that that the, that you all are able to do or that you've ever done as far as you know, what, what sort of roads, if they're happening on entrance corridors, if they're happening, who they're affecting, if it's impacting the elderly, people of color, what, what sort of, is there any, any sort of sorting of that data? Is that, is that even possible? Is that something that?
Our, our system, our in-house system, our record management system can do some of that, can do a lot of that. I pulled this data out and just summarized it from what we have. The Mass Massachusetts, the DOT Crash Portal can do a lot of that.
Okay.
It's a little it's a little tricky. It's a little tricky for me. I do use it, but yes, we can do that. I, and I can, I can back, back up and give you some of those. I can give you like the ages. In terms of the classification of the road, I, our in-house system doesn't doesn't classify the road. Just, it's just a listing of it.
And I wouldn't imagine entrance quarters would be something that we'd be even be able to sort because that's a local designation. It's not state highway or whatever, but even by state highway, it wouldn't be able to sort that way.
But there, on the, on the Mass Portal, you can
Okay.
delineate that. We, the only state road, the only true state highways we have is a section of Loring and a section of Highland.
Okay.
Or most of Highland, really. Is true state highway. Classified.
Are there any, in looking at that data, are there any trends that that you see or anything that you know, there's nationally, we can see what the data is about who is more likely to be, to be struck and, and, and which communities are more at risk? Is there anything we can see here locally in Salem?
Just, just looking at what we've had so far. The only commonalities are pedestrians who are trying to cross the road. We didn't have any where there was a someone to use the, the light activation, not that we have those everywhere, but we haven't had any in this data batch that we, that we're looking at where a driver oh, well, I bet with that one exception of the possibility of Washington and Norman, the they may have, the driver may have taken a right on red. But the troubling ones are the, the majority, well, close, close to say majority is nighttime. Weather is occasionally a factor. Lighting is somewhat of a factor in some of these. And I, I have to say, this is I'm getting, I'm getting away from the facts and what we can prove, but I have to think the pedestrians in some cases were taking a bit of a risk as to where they were when they were.
Yeah.
In a couple of cases, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, no, but.
No, it's in a couple of these, it might be the, the ability to cross the street in a timely fashion, might be, you know, everyone's got their own speed. So a couple of these might, you could probably look at that as a, as one factor.
I think that's what, that's what I was actually getting at. And I know you were probably on your way there, but the, the situation we had, it was either on North, I think it was North Street. Where, at least from my, from my own experience, I believe that that signal is iffy if best to whether or not that works. And I wonder if is there any understanding as to whether or not that, that signal may have caused the, the, the lack of use of that signal may have caused someone to choose to cross at a different location or is that unknowable?
I think in the case of this crash, unless we speak, you know, until we can actually speak to the person, we may not know. Or we don't know. We don't know if they wanted to use that light. My my experience tells me, and I could be wrong, my experience tells me that it was probably the desire to wherever the, the start and we know what the endpoint was off of Federal Street, the desire line was the straight line from Line Street over to Federal. It was probably or I should say it was possibly a maneuver that the gentleman's done numerous times. I'm not, I, I'll say with that light, we've, I've gotten some I should say a couple of reports where I've heard that the pedestrian light, the pedestrian cycle may not function properly. We haven't proven that to be. I've also heard that some of the turning signals, there are some red and green arrows in that, in that cluster. I've heard that those occasionally don't work properly. I haven't seen it firsthand, but these are something, these are things we have to look at. Sometimes we get a report that the signal isn't working right, but it's a very long wait for the pedestrian cycle. I'll say to this, I, I don't, I don't believe that the signal doesn't work. I think it works. It's just it might be one in 50 or one in 100 time when if there is a electrical problem with it, when it doesn't work properly. That was my that was my next crash was the the North Street one, the gentleman 72 was crossing from line over towards the Murphy's parking lot. The driver was coming south off the overpass. Driver's 60 years old. And it may or may not have had, had something to do with there being two lanes there. I don't know if he was obscured by another vehicle or not. But the operator said, I just didn't see him and very serious injuries there. And then the last one I included in the list was a, this was April 30th, so just just last weekend, elderly woman walking in Wal- in the Walmart parking lot, a car backed out of a space and knocked her down. No injury. The drivers, there was a technical problem with her license, but there was just the inattention, inattention of the driver to you know, to know that there wasn't, wasn't a person behind her when she backed up. I mentioned that one because we, we have had a couple of parking lot incidents, something serious lately, but that's something to think about too. Parking lot designs. That's all I have to present. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lieutenant Tucker. So I'll take questions from the, the council or the Traffic and Parking Commission. It looks like Eric Pepetti has his hand up. Eric.
Thank you, Ty. And thank you, Lieutenant Tucker. I just had a couple of quick questions. Number one, I was curious, how often are you all able to do something like subpoena the cell phone records of a driver to determine if they were texting or using their handheld device prior to the crash and if there are any impediments to doing that legally? And secondly, I was curious to know, what is your process for visiting the victims of a, of a pedestrian crash to get their statement after the accident? It's, I've always been a little like, it's a little tricky to think of, you know, you're able to interview the driver on the scene, but perhaps not able to interview the victim because they're being carted away in an ambulance or they've been hit in the head or, you know, the adrenaline is rushing. So I didn't know what your thoughts are on how to get kind of the, the pedestrian victim's side of the story in an impartial way as well. So just had those two questions.
In terms of the cell phone data, we can, we can get that. In some cases, it is, it is a process. Because of the, the time involved in the intrusion, it's generally reserved for the more serious crashes, so significant injuries, major events. So minor crashes, it's not something we generally are able to do because it is, it is I guess it is a little bit of a process in the the courts, you know, don't really want us do that every, you know, every time if, if it's a minor crash. But it can be done. It can be a little tricky to match things up, but it does give you a sense. In the successful prosecution cases, usually we see a ton of activity on the phone right up until the right up until the event. And that's pretty apparent what was going on there. In terms of the interview on the serious crashes, serious injuries, the, if it's moderate to mildly serious, the officer, the patrol officer will do the follow-up, do any follow-up necessary. If it's serious to serious, severe and fatal, we usually have the detective assigned to it. And a lot of times we'll have state police reconstruction also to investigate. And at some point they'll do they'll do that interview to get their side. Does that answer everything?
Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Harpworth. I have a couple of comments on a positive note, since I've been a councillor, I've reached out to the team of Mr. Kucharowski and Lieutenant Tucker several times and met with them about a variety of issues as Um, about a variety of issues as all the ward counselors, we have, you know, specific issues in our ward that. You know, may not have resulted in a, an accident yet, but potentially could. And a couple of times, along with Council Proznuski and once with Council Varela, um, which was. They let us know about some of the work they're doing, uh, or planning on doing or hope to do. Uh, on Lafayette Street from West Ave to Marblehead, where there's a lot of speed coming into Salem. And there's a lot of people who have issues, um, or challenges uh crossing the street or being identified. By vehicles uh coming towards downtown. I do want to mention two specific things, uh, one is, um, I've had a lot of people. Reach out about Salt and Stall School and um, we spoke about that. I guess there's uh some planning uh to redesign uh the crosswalk and the whole area around there. To make it safer for everyone and not just the students trying to cross the street. Um, and then Lieutenant Tucker mentioned Lafayette and Dow Street, um. Lafayette and Washington, which is at the same intersection, which is not a geometric intersection, it's very difficult, a lot of people confused about it. And uh, actually, uh, resident Ward Five Steve Kapanos uh let us know that. When people are coming down towards uh Wiener Brothers, for example, and want to take a left uh onto Washington Street. Uh, and are in limbo at the light, the light turns red and they strategically sit in the intersection. And then turn onto Washington, that when they do take that left onto Washington. Uh, the light signal directs them that they can cross the street, the pedestrians at the same time. So um, uh, David and David uh mentioned that they would adjust or delay the light. Which I thought was very positive, I do have one um kind of ongoing specific. Um, concern that a lot of residents in Ward Five have, which is. The difficulty of pedestrians, bicyclists, even people in cars. Who are trying to enter Lafayette Street or Canal Street, I'm sure this happens in other parts of the city, who are unable to see oncoming. Traffic uh when vehicles are parked too close to the intersection. And I believe uh, Mr. Kucharowski had mentioned in an email to some of the counselors that. Um, it may be some more work trying to enforce the distance from the intersection. So people don't have as much difficulty or fear across in the street. And tha- and that's the one I wanted to focus on, if you guys could talk about that.
I'll uh, I'll say briefly, uh, uh, Dave Kucharowski can do a better job, um. Uh, by ordinance, blanket ordinance, the intersection distance is twenty feet. And we don't need any further ordinance per street, uh, sometimes we put signs up. Uh, we really can't have them everywhere because of, you know, we have too much sign clutter, but. Uh, twenty feet is enforceable, there are places where we exceed that, uh, if there's a good reason, uh, and we do have. Uh, we do have some areas in the city where we pull the parking back even further, but yes, um. Good visibility on the corners is is a very good thing to have, um, I'll leave it to Dave Kucharowski to speak more intelligently about it.
Uh, just to add to what Lieutenant Tucker said, the the term of uh. Keeping those areas open so that motorists can see pedestrians is called daylighting. And the twenty feet is the state standard, uh, we do look at areas to see if that should be extended further. Given the context of the intersections, especially where we know uh the new schools and we have children who might be crossing the crosswalks. Uh, we've we've actually put together a design, working with counselors Cohen and Proznuski on Levitt Street in Salem. To daylight uh that uh intersection a little better, uh, I'm working now with. Uh, striking contractors as well as DPW to get some additional signage out there to enforce it, so that that's certainly something if we're. Notified about it, we're happy to take a look and and identify whether it can be done quickly. Where a sign can fit in properly at twenty feet, and that doesn't require any ordinance changes, but in cases where we need to go beyond that. Uh, we'll work with the Traffic and Parking Commission to get a recommendation that does get submitted to the full council. And gets usually adopted and passed in the ordinance, and we have DPW install the signage, that's that's been effective.
Thank you, I'll I'll add, uh, just just for my colleagues, we will for gen- general questions or general comments, we will open up some time at the end, if we can. Sort of direct the comments and or the questions around um, Lieutenant Tucker and and Chief Miller, as far as what they're seeing right now. We will have time at the end to sort of just talk about sort of general things that are on your mind right now, and we will continue this this conversation moving forward also, Council McLean.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth, um. Lieutenant Tucker, uh, I wonder if you can speak to us a little bit about. Um, trends on a little bit more of a macro scale, so zooming out from just the last six months or five months. Uh, what kind of trends do we see in the city, say, you know, for the last few years or or sort of long-term patterns? In terms of, excuse me, in terms of uh streets that tend to be more problematic. Conditions that tend to be more problematic, what kinds of accidents do we see the most? And I ask that question for two reasons, uh, number one. To understand how our enforcement efforts are directed in the city, because that's a question that I get a lot from my constituents. And number two, just probably more for for Mr. Kucharowski, actually, uh, number two, to understand how our traffic calming efforts. Are directed and weighted in the city.
Um, so we look at, uh, in we we have, you know, we have a number of accidents. Per year, um, in um. Twenty twenty-one. From the state portal, we have um, six hundred and twenty-seven crashes that were reported to the state. In a frame of reference, the same from the same data poll from the state. Uh, statewide, there were one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and six crashes, um, that resulted in a crash report. Uh, but it out of those six twenty-seven, um. On a on a case-by-case basis, if if we can uh demonstrate directly that the, you know, the accident was caused by. A defect in the road or defect in the signals or um, just a condition that's um. That's unfavorable, we act directly on that, uh, and then. In terms of a single road that's um. You know, that's that's uh has a higher higher. Frequency of of crashes, we do look at that, um, generally, I. I couldn't tell you right now, I I would have to really do a a better analysis for that specific question, but. Generally, you know, the the higher the volume in the road, the obviously statistically you'd have a higher crash rate, um. Speed, uh, so uh to to wander into the other part of your question. Uh, the top three things that we're seeing is uh distraction, speed and um aggression, aggression. Or um, discourtesy, if you will, so uh, distraction, I think by far is is the uh. The biggest violation we have, um.
If we, will you talk a little bit about the data collection you do of some of the technology that uh that we've uh invested in?
Yes, we have, um, we have six um radar-based traffic data collectors. Will mount them, they're very inconspicuous, so the motorists don't know that they're being monitored, but they do know, um, and uh. The um. Uh, they'll capture the volume, um, volume and speeds for the time period that we put them out. Uh, so we've collected data on a number of roads, uh. Uh, a big portion of that data has been used for the traffic calming program, uh, generally, it's in response to a a complaint. Or complaints, or um, just to respond to our observations or uh Traffic and Parking Department's observations. So we'll mount the, we'll mount the devices, um, we'll capture data for usually, it's usually at least a week, sometimes more. And then we'll get a sense of, we'll get a a volume, um, it's broken down by time of day. Vehicle size classification, uh, we get a lot of reports out of it, it's average speeds, eighty-fifth percentile speeds. They're um, pretty comprehensive amount of data that we get from them.
Sorry.
Oh, good.
I was gonna ask Council McLean if you had any other questions, but if you have more to come.
Yeah, uh, I I don't think I have other questions, but I I would like to hear from 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 Mr. Kucharowski about um. How that data gets used and captured and and how traffic calming efforts are then directed.
Uh, certainly, so, uh, the traffic calming program, which was launched in two thousand and eighteen. Really, the the clock starts when we receive an application, we have an online application that we ask the residents to fill out. We encourage them to also submit a petition that gives us a sense of how many people on a street or a particular intersection are observing. Um, high speeds or other uh dangerous behavior. And what we do is, uh, one of the first things we do is, we reach out to Lieutenant Tucker and ask him to put one of these devices on the road. To capture the data, so that, uh, what we're trying to do there is see if the perception is a reality, and it gives us the volumes and the speeds of the roadway. We also look at the crash history of the intersection of the road, and we've developed a prioritization tool, um, which takes into account uh land uses. So if there's a school nearby, this particular road or intersection, there's more likelihood to have children go walk into school, uh. Other demographics, uh, is there senior housing or something like that, where you might have other uh individuals who who might be at risk. Um, for accidents, so we we take all of this information. And then we present it to the Traffic and Parking Commission, and we invite the proponents, and we have a discussion about what our findings are. We also get firsthand information from the the residents, and this helps us to identify. Whether or not we could, what we think we could initially pursue, or whether or not we we think that the priority isn't as high as others. Because we are obviously um controlled by staff as well as the resources, our budget that that we can do to implement these projects. And the prioritization tool is available for anyone to look at online through the Traffic and Parking Department site. Uh, in addition, all of the data that Lieutenant Tucker, the chief have identified, that we we upload all that information. So anyone could look at the data that we've captured for the various roadways. And what we do is, we have the before data, when we do implement uh these traffic calming measures. Uh, we go back out and we collect same dead data in the in the same locations, um, and we try to compare. And then, and in many cases, we've shown a reduction in the speed, and that helps us to uh tweak the designs. Uh, we work with a number of different consultants, we try different measures, we've probably seen speed cushions on the roadway, speed humps. We do other tactical applications where we're we're striking the roadways, uh, doing daylighting, putting in flex posts. Um, so this this helps us um, to really test these out. It's it's an iterative process, because we're we're taking these roadways that were essentially built around cars, and we're trying to make them. Uh, safe for everyone, um, so you know, the traffic calming program, in my opinion, goes hand in hand with our complete streets policy. So we're always trying to uh, you know, implement these measures moving forward. Hope that answers uh your question, Council.
Yes, I I think it does, um, I, I I I'm I'm trying to understand how that is balanced with. With the reality of there being major arteries and and major high-volume roads, um. I think, I think what I hear from many people in the city is that they're they're speeding everywhere, right? You can pick a given street and if you watch it long enough, you'll see some people speeding, right? So how does how does that resident-driven request for do something about my street where I am get balanced with? This is what we observe as professionals at the city level, and these are the major places that we sort of want to put our attention. I don't know if that boils down to a simple answer, but that's that's what I'm hoping will emerge from the conversation.
Just to add to that, Council, we we also work with Engineering Department, they're working on the larger capital construction projects. You know, the South of Bridge Street, which was recently completed, where it included uh protected bike lanes. So we're trying to tackle those larger corridors with with more hardscape infrastructure. Where um, we try to focus more on the local streets that are seeing cut-through traffics, and again, that are in close proximity to schools. Or um, places where we know elderly live, a- and where we're seeing uh high speeds based on the data we're collecting, I'm working with the police.
Or if I could just briefly, uh, where where we get um complaints or um traffic calming applications. Um, I mean, speeds relative to your street, as we, I'll make a bunch of statements, we probably all know, but speed is relative to your street. So uh, some of the smaller streets, uh, the the volume, the volume in Salem is far exceeded what the. arteries are um capable of comfortably handling, and people have uh. Uh, you know, locals have always resorted to uh using the alternate route to cut-throughs. Now with GPS availability and sophistication, um, we're seeing more more volume on streets. Historically, haven't seen, you know, haven't had anyone but actual residents use them. Um, and that's given the, that's giving you the uh impression of speed in some cases, or or it actually is. Traffic speeding in in many cases too, um, so we're trying to, we're trying to learn what's really going on. And then um, in you know, in in some cases, um, the traffic calming will hopefully do both. It will reduce the volume, reduce the speed, and make the street uh more comfortable again and feel safer. And um, and and to speak to that, we did data collection on on Valley Street. A while back, and now that the uh speed, uh, those humps or cushions, David, I keep getting confused with. They street the um, the speed reduction devices, uh, we're gonna do data collection this, uh, starting this week. And uh, see what the effect has been, uh, the devices right now are out on uh Proctor in that area, which is another street that. Uh, we're getting a lot of reports and observations of of speeding and high volume.
Thank you.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth, not being a member of the committee, uh, I had a question uh for um enforcement at crosswalks. I was wondering uh how big an issue is it in Salem of getting vehicles to stop at crosswalks? If you feel they generally are, or you know, if you have an estimate of how many are just going going through crosswalks. Not being mindful of somebody trying to cross the street, and if you found it helpful that, uh, and if there's a difference between. If there's just the crosswalk uh uh on the street level, you just just in the white lines as opposed to. Our crosswalks that tend to have a sign, you know, pedestrian crossing with an arrow to the crosswalk. Uh, what's your opinion on how helpful it is to have a more enhanced crosswalk in place? And you're just in generally, when enforcing, how how big an issue you think that is, thank you.
Um, it it is a, it is an issue that we we see firsthand and and we get reports of, um, generally. I would, I would have to dig into that to see if I could come up with a percentage number for you, but I think it's a, I think it's an issue. But it's not a terrible issue that we can't deal with, we, it's something that we can um certainly monitor. That sometimes we do selective enforcement in the and on those areas where we've gotten complaints, multiple complaints on one particular crosswalk. In in a lot of cases around the city, if you, as you've seen, um, the crosswalks sometimes fall into disrepair, uh, particularly the. The um, paint, you know, wears wears pretty rapidly, um, but that's a, that's a big budget item. The city will have to figure out how they can keep the crosswalks looking looking uh sharp and obvious to the drivers. Um, generally, what we're seeing is um. Pretty good driver compliance, but there are people who, you know, you, when you, when you queue up on your crosswalk. Uh, you might see a car to go by. Uh, so we we hope that the pedestrians' expectation is. Once they make their intention known, um. You know, tra- traffic, we we try to be reasonable. Traffic won't come to a screeching halt. Uh, one or two cars might get by, but. The areas we're really concerned about is when the cars are just streaking by and pedestrian. Really doesn't think they're gonna get a shot to get across there. And probably a more common violation is. Uh, when you're. When you're near lane stops for you and you start your progress. Um, we we see and we hear a lot of reports of. Uh, of the cars coming from the opposite direction. Not yielding to pedestrian. Um, and that's. That's a driver education thing that we can. Uh, you know, ju- with the police, usually the the tool has been enforcement and uh. Try to. Scare the driver into thinking that we're out there watching, you know, you don't know where we'll be, what we'll give you and uh. But. Some type of education would help there too to dri- driving, I not to not to run off the rails here, but driving. Uh, ability and um. You know, ability and courtesy and everything seems to have declined over the years. Um. In uh. Across the boards on on all types of driving and violations.
Uh, I'm gonna jump in for one minute and and to describe the, so the the overall uh sort of MO of of Salem Police in terms of traffic enforcement. Um. Lieutenant Tucker runs our traffic division and he has officers who answer directly to him. Who are assigned based on those problems that we see or or where data suggests uh uh, you know, speed is uh is a particularly bad problem. Um, and then the the rest of uh the patrol force will do traffic enforcement. They will make car stops, et cetera, but it's much more of a uh, you know. While they're going about their patrol, uh where they're in their beats, where they observe traffic violations, they'll do a traffic stop when they're not assigned to another call. Um, so that's a little bit more haphazard, uh, but uh it not surprisingly, uh Lieutenant Tucker's unit is the one that writes them, but the uh, the the majority of those traffic violations. But writes the tickets for.
And just while we're on the topic of crosswalks real quick, or while we were on the topic of crosswalks, um, for those listening at home, that we all have. We know there's certain certain spots where drivers just. Frequently don't see the pedestrian or don't stop. There's a Derby Street near what used to be Flatbread comes to mind to me, but there's there's places and people. Who live in those neighborhoods know what know exactly where those spaces are. Uh, I guess to to David Tucker or David Kucharsky, um. What do you, what do you recommend folks do when they notice those? Is it best to see, click, fix, or is it best to? Contact your counselor? What sort of things should should people do to address? Crosswalks that maybe need to get repainted or crosswalks that need some lighting or that maybe need a sign? What what sort of things can folks do?
Um. If it's a. It's a crosswalk that needs to be painted or it's a street light that's out, something to that effect where something that's where a sign is down, that would be a see, click, fix issue. If all those things are in place and maintain, uh. It could be a traffic calming application uh or an email to myself. Uh, or and the user word counselor, um, just so we can look at it. Um, compliance with crosswalks I find are always gets improved when you're able to slow down the traffic because you increase the the cone of the person's view of. Of what's going on, not just in front of them, but off to the sides. So it's it's that's that's an important aspect of it. We're able to slow down the overall speeds of the drivers as they're going through these areas. They're more likely to to see the pedestrians and 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 stop, but if the speeds are higher, obviously their. Their zone vision is a lot narrower. And they're not necessarily seeing what's to the right or to the left of them.
Thank you. Uh, Council President Morsol.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to start by uh first acknowledging that this has been a tough week for residents in Salem beginning on Monday. And for responding police officers. Um, and I do want to take a minute to just um acknowledge that, and I certainly hope that Derby has been helpful. For some of those responding officers because it's been pretty bad. Um. I would love to advocate. Getting rid of the um. Right on red at Riley Plaza. For all of those, all of those intersections there. Um, I am a, I'm a big walker. I walk downtown every single day. And um. Car cars, drivers do not care if if there's a walk light on. If people are in the crosswalk, if they have a red light and they're gonna turn, they're gonna turn. And um, my glaring at them hasn't stopped it yet, which is disappointing, but um, so I would love to advocate getting rid of that turn on red. Um, so I'll just leave that there and you guys can mull that over. Uh, my question though is. How how much do we? Enforce the distracted driving? And the reason I'm bringing this up is. One of the columns that I do like to read every day in the Salem News is the police log. And um. A couple, couple weeks ago, there was a whole listing of. Distracted driving tickets in Marblehead. And I was like, hmm. All right, they spent a day or two really enforcing that law, giving out warnings, giving out tickets, and it was, it, I loved it. I loved reading that. I loved seeing all the violations that they picked up there. And uh, we need that. We need that in Salem for people to start to get the the point and and understand that. It's not okay to have your phone in your hand while you're driving. It's just not, and I see it all the time. All of us see this all the time. And I just don't ever see anyone stopped for it. I've never seen it listed in the police log. Maybe you guys don't give the paper that information, but. I would love to see. A big enforcement effort along those lines. Um. Distracted driving and speeding is the number one complaint I get from residents and it's only gone up since the pandemic. I think people are home more. Um, I think they're seeing what's happening on their streets, but it it's it's really bad. It's really bad. Um, I will also add that. With the new um. Direction apps like Waze, there's a lot more cars going down normally residential streets that never saw this level of traffic. And cars are speeding down small roads that, you know, they just shouldn't be there. Um, so I mean, there's a lot going on. Um, I don't know how you would stop that particular. Item, but the speeding and the distracted driving and the disrespect. Um, and I will say, you know, when a- as a as a. Pedestrian or bicyclist, if you're at a crosswalk and it's your. Turn to cross because you have the light and you're continuously stopped because of drivers going right through. You get as aggressive as drivers do and it's probably not a good thing. So I I think there's aggressive uh aggressiveness, aggression growing on all sides here. Um. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
If I could, if I could respond briefly, um, we. I I agree with you completely. Um. The distractions, speeding, I wish people would at least pick one. We're seeing people do both. Um. But we um, we do make a concerted effort on the distracted driving and not to. Not to rest on an old um accolade, but we uh in twenty. Twenty twenty, I think. Maybe it wasn't a fair year to judge. We were the third in the state. I think we were behind the state police and then. Lowell, I believe, beat us on the. Distracted driver uh citations. And at at the end of your um, at the end of your discussion, you mentioned the pedestrians and I don't want, I don't want. You know, I think I'm blaming pedestrians, but um, we do see distraction on their part too. Um, we do see pedestrians. Walking in um, looking at their phones or just doing something other than. Focus on on where they're walking. Um. And in some cases, I think that leads to ne- uh crashes or near crashes, uh. Because they, sometimes we're seeing the, you know, the assumption that the driver sees them. The pedestrians assuming that they'll be seen. Uh, but if the driver is distracted, uh, that's not a safe assumption, so.
Hey, I think it's worth saying, um, the the uh. Our, we generally don't put that level of specificity in our police, in the police log that we share with uh with Salem News. So you wouldn't see where we do uh uh distracted driving enforcement and we do do quite a bit of it. Um, to to uh amplify what Lieutenant Tucker was saying about uh traffic enforcement in Salem. You know, I think over the last couple of years, for a whole variety of reasons, some honorable, some not quite so honorable, uh, police enforcement, uh, the writing of traffic citations has decreased. Uh, not just across Massachusetts, but across the United States. Um, one of the things that I'm particularly pleased by the Salem Police. About is that uh our numbers have really not fallen off to the same degree that uh a lot of other police departments have throughout, through certainly throughout Massachusetts. And those numbers that the the Lieutenant Tucker mentioned back that up. Um. You know, our our traffic, I I our writing of citations has come off a little bit, but it's come off in proportion to the reduction in personnel that we've unfortunately been uh been suffering through.
Council McCarthy.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, not being a member of the committee. I'm gonna go back to the beginning. And uh, with the discussion, and I'm, it's happy to see Beth Ann with us. And the superintendent and obviously. Uh, the concerns with regards to the kids getting to and from school. Um, with school choice, how, what are we seeing for? Kids actually walking or biking to school because. I mean, every morning I walk, I every morning I go by the Bentley Academy or when. I've been involved in elections. The line of cars. Every morning for drop off. Is staggering. I don't, I mean, so I mean, it I obviously want to promote. Safe streets, want to promote anybody being, want to promote people walking to school. I mean. I went to my mother's house today and I saw twenty kids walking down the same street I used to walk down. And I was harkening back to. The crossing guard at the end of the street was Mrs. Rice and she crossed us every day when we were kids going to elementary school. You just knew your crossing garden and that was the way it was, but I don't. I don't see that with. You you know, in that because the with this with school choice and kids, you know, and I'm not against school choice. It's just the kids don't, you know, the kids who live in the neighborhood sometimes don't go to the school. So you're not seeing. The kids, a lot of walkers or bikers, you're seeing a lot of. You know, if I could figure out a way to queue up cars in and out of the Bentley Academy, I think I'd become a hero. With all the traffic, I mean, I've seen the line all the way back almost to the intersection of. Statah Lane and you know, Webb Street. So. I mean, what what data are we looking at with kids going to school and how can we help? I guess the biggest question is. We're all sitting here and I give Lieutenant Tucker a lot of credit for running through the data. But it all comes down to an educational piece on all ends. The drivers need to be educated, the pedestrians need to be educated, the bikers need to be educated. Everyone has to understand that. You know, we're moving to a complete streets. Type of system where. The streets aren't just for vehicles anymore. And the vehicles have to understand that, but at the same time is just because you put in an unprotected bike lane, doesn't mean. The person in the bike lane has got like, they believe they're invincible because they're in this little painted strip. That has a bike symbol in it that says. They get to go where they're going, so. Um. But with regards to the schools, what are we seeing with with um? People walking and biking? Is there, has there been a big push for that? And if so, how can we help?
I was gonna say Beth Ann. Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, it's Steve. I hope it's okay. I'm gonna. Sort of jump in, but um. You know, Bob, I think I think that's where. The the district is looking to, my dog is going bananas barking right now, of course, as soon as I unmute. Um, I I think that we like to be good partners with the city and think about. Um, you know, the safe roads. Knock it off. Proactively and holistically, right? Like having conversation, exactly what you're talking about, Bob, right? Like, and this is what I was saying that they're doing in places like Needham or it's like you have, I'm going to kill you. Have a real robust com- I'm not, I love the dog, uh, robust conversation about uh walking safety, biking safety in Needham, you know, you have, you can't ride your bike to school until you get a license from the Salem Public Schools. Or the the Needham Public Schools like in collaboration with the police department, right? So those, you know, I was, when I was listening to uh. David Kucharsky talking about, you know, the kind of speeding assessments and looking at ones that have, you know, that are done near schools. You know, like sharing that information with Salem Public Schools so that we could think about, you know, okay, how do we develop strong walking routes for kids? And we can tell their parents, we can provide them a map that says, you know, and if you're gonna walk from North Salem over to um. You know, Carlton, here's. Here's the best route and we've worked with the city and we've got crossing guard placement and you know, just thinking a little bit. More proactively about how um, you know. How we talk to kids and and for your part as city councilors, how you talk to residents of Salem about how and where to walk. Um, I mean, that's, that's why I'm here. It's just to think sort of a little, a little bit more big picture about how to um, how to change the culture. Of walking, biking and driving in this city.
Thank you.
I I I agree, and the the one thing I would add is. Those, and I know it's not, and nobody on this in this screen had anything to do with it. But those foolish blinking yellow lights when you have crosswalks and you push the button. Gone are the days when you push the button and the 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 crosswalk light would come up and it would be like a red light. And now they got those blinking rotating yellow lights. Nobody pays attention to those because they don't know what they are, and I think that's part of the educational piece. But I mean, if you go down, if you go down, I go down Bridge Street every morning. And if someone's in the crosswalk and they hit that button and all of a sudden you get those yellow lights that start flashing and that that tells you that somebody in the crosswalk. That just means yellow, yellow to everyone means ye- yield. And in some cases, it means speed up before it goes red. And I think that's the the culture of the way some drivers are, but it's like gone are the days where it went to a red light and it meant, it meant stop to allow the pedestrian to cross the they. And I know it's a mass DOT thing, but those those. Rotating blinking yellows. For the crosswalk lights, I I I I guess I'm old school. If someone's in the, if someone wants to cross the street and they hit the button, the light goes red, you stop and you let them cross, not this blinking yellow thing, someone's trying to figure out what you're going, you're doing. That's just my two cents on that, but I think it. I think when it does come down to a lot of uh. An educational piece, because you know, we, when you look at all the. You know, the all the dead. The in the data from over the last four, five, six months. That uh Lieutenant Tucker brought in, a lot of it is, you know, I don't want to see, you know, I agree with what the. The chair said, you know, we'd love to come to a s- a point where where. Zero crashes, but at the same time is if you're gonna get to zero crashes, you have to educate everybody on all sides because. You know, if someone's not in a crosswalk and they're crossing a major. Thoroughfare. And if if they can't go the extra twenty, thirty, forty feet to get to the crosswalk in order to hit the button across and they're jaywalking. Then that's an issue. At the same time as. The, you know. It's saying that because they're trying, that they, they're not going to the designated area, but if the designated area isn't properly lit and doesn't have. The buttons on it so that you can push it to cross, then that's also an issue. So I mean, I think we, we as a city, we all, everyone needs to do better. And I don't, you know, I don't want to see anyone get hurt and how how we achieve that is. Um, you know, way beyond, I think, the discussion tonight, but if it's all gonna come down to. An educational piece in uh having people understand what the roads are intended for, so. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And then I will go to uh Tanya and Counselor Prozniewski, and then I I think just in the interest of time, if we could head into the uh the presentation that Tanya has after Counselor Prozniewski's question.
Great. Perfect. Um, thank you, Chair, um, Hathworth. I will yield then to Counselor Prozniewski and um hopefully uh get this presentation up there after that because I think it builds on. A lot of what everybody has been thinking about and talking about. So uh, Counselor Prozniewski.
So we'll yield Tanya's question to Andy after Counselor Prozniewski then, or Counselor Varela after Counselor Prozniewski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know most of you know that I spent an entire career working on the police department and um. Speaking for a lot of members in the police department, they. Uh, we drove the streets eight hours every day of our shift up and down. We got to know the city. Up and down, we got to know the city, has the intersections, what was working, what wasn't working, how things changed and things like that. Everybody knows that the city is old, it was designed long before roads. You know, we're not the Midwest, we weren't laid out in a grid with traffic in mind, we were laid out with cot paths and horses in mind, I think. And now we're in a predicament where we are trying to make the city safer and more travelable. By motor vehicle, by pedestrian and by bicycles. I, I, I tip my hat to the Traffic and Parking Commissioner, our, our think tank, which is trying to make. Some semblance out of all the disorder that's been. That's been caused over the years and, you know, some of the changes have been, are, are working. And I think that the general public realizes that the things that have, changes are. Being done out there are for the good, slow traffic down, make pedestrians a little bit safer. But, you know, going back to when I was a police officer, I remember saying, you know, I don't understand why. This intersection isn't changed this way, or that intersection isn't changed that way. And, you know, you know, a simple, simple change could, could help things. And it just, I wasn't any, any position to make, to make those changes, you know, just being on the police department. Now as a city councillor, I'm saying to myself basically the same things. How come those changes that are pretty common sense, don't seem to come to fruition, simp- simple changes? I know that Bob McCarthy and Dave Kucharsky, we talked, when I first got on, we talked about the bump out at Columbus and. And Ford Avenue, just to slow traffic down going into Columbus Avenue from Ford Ave. That's, that's been two and a half years, that hasn't happened yet, and believe me, I'm not pointing fingers at, at, at anybody except the system. Because the system seems to slow down any common sense that, that people come up with, any good ideas. And I'm sure the Traffic and Parking Commission is also, I stymied and handcuffed because some of the changes that they want to implement. Are being deflected and, and it gets lost in, in, in red tape. Just a couple of side notes. I know that we're always talking about. The pedestrian safety during October. The crosswalk right in town elsewhere, at Essex and Washington Street. It's, it, it's, it's a mess and I think we've advocated for a long time to put a pedestrian light. Right there, not a traffic light or signal light to direct traffic, but a pedestrian light that would, that would let. Traffic know that pedestrians are crossing and, and the pedestrians wouldn't just, just cross. Here and there and, and cause huge backup, especially during the weekends and the, and the times in October. I remember back in the days when Washington and Bridge Street, when there was a rotary and maybe one or two of you. Remember, remember that, there was a big rotary at Washington and Bridge, Bridge Street, which is now gone. Now it's a big. Giant asphalt Speedway and we've seen some tragedies. Over there, I, you know, one of the visions I remember and I'm sure. Lieutenant Tucker and maybe even Chief Miller have, have seen the, the mother and two children getting bowled over like, like bowling pins. By a, by a driver at nighttime, in that intersection. It was, it's, it's not a safe place and I don't know whether that's because it was the wrong design at that time, maybe we should be redesigning. Maybe we should be rethinking, putting a rotary back over there. I don't know if it would fit with the traffic configuration, we'll leave that to the, to the experts. On that, and also the possibility of, of using the. The abandoned railway that runs right underneath Bridge Street that actually joins on to. Washington Street at the old courthouses where people wouldn't have to cross. On the street, they could actually walk through that abandoned railway tunnel and have some kind of a stairway or a escalator to the top of the. The street where it would come right up on the other side of, of the, on the other, across the street from the train station. Right near the courthouses, but you know, there, there's been a lot of ideas that get tossed around and then they just, they just get kind of lost. And they're not, they're not my ideas, these are ideas I listen, listen to other. Police officers and other. People in, in the city say, you know, why isn't this changed? Why hasn't that changed? The, the flashing lights at the crosswalks. Bob McCarthy, I'm gonna disagree with you a, a little bit, only because I like to know that. When I see those lights, I know there's somebody coming out on the crosswalk, so I live nearby the college, I know that there's a couple of sets of them. Over on Loring Avenue and I, I, I like that, it doesn't, it doesn't make a red light, it doesn't back traffic up and lets. The drivers know that, yes, somebody is in that crosswalk, keep your eyes open, let them cross if, if they're in there. So I, I, I think that's a, a good idea. Highland Avenue is due for a makeover, I don't know where that state stands, I know that the city, the state has put in a lot of money. And I think Council Marcello may know a little bit more about exactly when they're gonna start breaking ground and, and making it a safer. Safer place, but it's, it's historically, it's been a Speedway. You know, as long back as I can remember, it has always been bad accidents and once again, we have a bad accident. And I think some redesign may, may would, would, would help out on that. And, and from. The, the school standpoint, the kids walk into school, you know, those days, those days are gone. You know, we, we, those children that do walk to school, I, I, you know, would like, we'd like to make it as safe as possible, but. You know, we don't, we don't have neighborhood schools anymore, where neighbor, where the neighborhood kids walk to their neighborhood schools and, we know, we have. We, we have every, we don't have one vehicle per household anymore where you had to walk to school because there was no choice, everybody now drives and. And take a look at the congestions, Bob's talking about Bentley Street. And about the Bentley School. Look at Salem Street behind Saltonstall School, it gets, it gets impacted to the point where you can't even, you can't even drive that way. During school let out, and that's just, that's where, where the, we're the victims of our own, our own times and our own headaches from that, so. I, I, I guess the point I would like to make is if this, I would just like to see the. The sluggishness, the red tape go away and, and have some of these good ideas that everybody's. Trying, trying to put out there and, and sink our teeth into them and make some positive changes and not just, not just kick them to the side. And, you know, because we have to have a consultant or, or, or think somebody else has to get involved, it's just, it's. Let's, let's do it, let's, let's put our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prozinski, and I'll, I'll add that, back to your original point around the way Salem was designed, Salem was designed for people. But I would take my chances walking through Salem over. A place like Phoenix, it was designed for cars, I think that's something to remember as we. As we design our streets, the streets that are designed for people are always safer than streets that were, that are built for cars, no matter how efficient they may, they may feel, but. Thank you, appreciate your thoughts. Counselor Varela, and then we'll move over to Tanya's presentation and then, and then on to eventually on to Dirtbikes.
Thank you, thank you Chair Hathworth, I will keep it short once, so I appreciate the conversation we've had tonight, there's a lot to cover, there's a lot. To discuss. I just believe there should be some focus on this conversation, more importantly, lowering the death rate when it concerning traffic. And vehicle safety. For one instance, I know we've had deaths, especially on one A this year. But nine years ago, in front of her home at four sixty-four Loring Avenue, an eighty-three-year-old woman at nine. Was crossing Loring Avenue and she was struck and killed by a hit-and-run driver. And, you know. What, what this all comes down to is speed. If we can figure out a way to mitigate speed and really focus on that. I think that, that's a conversation we should really, truly primarily be having. You know, it's about extending the ability for a pedestrian to actually survive. An occurrence, which we will always have occurrences concerning traffic, so if we can focus on mitigating speed, I think that's. That's a, the primarily, I think, the conversation, which, thank you. Thank you.
Tanya.
Sure, just, let's hope so, hold on just a moment, gonna find this PowerPoint here. First of all, thank you, everyone for being here. This is a really important conversation, I'm going to hopefully start this screen share here. I want to build off what Andy was just saying and what Counselor Marcello was mentioning earlier. Is that, I, I'm gonna say that I've been feeling really sad. Angry, frustrated, scared over the past few months. What you're seeing on your screen right now is just some highlights since the beginning of the year. From that have made the, the newspapers about what's been going on on our streets. And I want to mention this because these are very real people, these are our neighbors. The woman you're seeing down in the picture below is Mindy Mailit Cook. She lived in Lynn, she was killed on Highland Ave in January. And James Newhall and Margaret Newhall died last night or yesterday afternoon on our streets. And these are just the people that have died since January, we've had, as Lieutenant Tucker mentioned. Some other very serious injuries on our streets, so. That, I, I'm just gonna mention that this strikes me on a very emotional level because I think we all have had close calls and we've all had crashes. And this is very real for all of us. So, we're here tonight. To start thinking, I think we're just, you know, people have great ideas, but we're starting to think about what we can do. And there's, there's a relatively new approach out there that suggests that we reframe the way that we think about crashes. Right? And a lot, this is known as Vision Zero, it has a few other names out there, but this is a movement that began. In Sweden and is popular in the Netherlands and has also been adopted in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville and a lot of other. Major cities and smaller cities around the, the United States. So I'm hoping that you'll just spend the next few minutes and watch this video with me, it's less than four minutes long. And it talks about the, this Vision Zero approach. This is, you know, this highlights Sweden, but it's, it's obviously relevant for us, so, um, thank you for indulging me, hold on just a sec, hopefully this works.
Tanya, I'm not hearing the video that well. Audio can be tough.
Is that any better? Hold on, let's see. Hold on, let me see.
A little bit better.
Okay, if it's still a problem, let me know, I'm gonna restart it.
More than is safety is often ignored, for some reason we seem to be more tolerant of death if it happens on the roads. If you take the nuclear power station, if you take aviation, if you take the rail system. All of them are based on that they should be operated by people who can make a mistake. Some would argue that this higher tolerance is the price we have to pay for mobility. We disagree. There is no moral justification for any loss of life in traffic. We need to understand as a society that we can demand freedom and mobility and we can demand safety at the same time. This approach is what the Vision Zero is all about, no loss of life is acceptable. The figure zero has changed the mindset.
Tanya, are you able to click the share audio? Is there a share audio button on there? Coming in and out, I think we're hearing it through your speaker.
Oh, I'm so sorry about that, um.
Or is, and, and we can, we do, I did share this out to the committee earlier and we can, for anyone at home was.
Maybe everyone's gonna have to watch that on their own. And I'm sorry.
Excellent, it is an excellent video, if you have a chance, chance to watch it, and for anyone at home, if you want to send me an email, if you weren't able to see it, I'd send that along to you as well.
So there we go, so I'll just give you, you know, the, the short version of that is Vision Zero is this movement. That, you know, says no loss of life is acceptable on our roads. It shows, talks a little bit what they, about what they've done in Sweden over the past years as their automobile traffic has gone up. Their deaths and serious injuries have all, actually gone down because of the interventions that they've made. In their streets, so that's the, the gist of that video, but they do it a lot better than I could there. So just to bring this home to the US, you're seeing some of the, the figures here from the fatalities. In the US, we had been on our way down, but on the past couple of years, we actually have been going up during the pandemic, so. Salem is not isolated in this, un- unfortunately. I also want to emphasize that this is very much, when we think about traffic, safety, pedestrian deaths, things like that. This is very much an equity issue because pedestrian deaths are disproportionately people of color. They're also people in low-income neighborhoods. And as we heard from a number of the incidents that have happened in Salem, they're older people that are most often. Killed in car crashes. So, you know, what can we do? How might we incorporate this? I want to let all of you know, because it seems like a great time to talk about it, is that earlier this year. The US Department of Transportation released a new strategy that they're using. And this is the safe systems approach, so this is on the national level with the expectation that this is going to be all over the country. And it very much mirrors this Vision Zero approach. So, the thing that's different about this is, it, it takes into account. That the people on our roads, the people walking, biking, they make mistakes and they're vulnerable. And we need to design things in ways that takes us into account and builds redundancy in. It also takes into account the education pieces and things like that, but this puts more responsibility on our shoulders. As leaders to spend the money and take the time and make the changes that we've all been. Talking about throughout this meeting and more. And just a little more about this safe systems approach, these are, these are the focuses here. I'm thinking tonight, you know, and going into the future, especially with the Traffic and Parking Commission, we have control, you know, to, to the extent we do over. To make safer roads and safer speeds, that is within our power. I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we're already doing some of this through the Traffic and Parking. Commission and Department, working in conjunction with some other departments. If you get a moment, click these links, because as someone was mentioning earlier, there, especially this one right here. Takes you to our, all sorts of maps where we map out. You know, equity index, and you know, crash data, equity data, and we take that into account. We also take public input and we do have a complete streets policy out there, so I'd love for when you guys, when you all get a moment for you to. Click on these links and you can also see the types of strategies that we use on our streets. When we do these traffic calming initiatives, neck downs, I know, I know so many of your constituents hate the flex posts. They hate the paint, but they're there for a reason, these are, these are the strategies that we're, we're utilizing. So. I think we're, what I'd love for us to discuss tonight or at some time in the future is whether. As a city, we can make a commitment to Vision Zero. And what this means is, it would be a commitment from the mayor, city councillor, city council, police, public health, et cetera. That we would eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries by a certain date. And I'll, I'll click to the next slide because the Vision Zero movement is. You know, you can see it's part of the Vision Zero network here, it's a group of cities and people working towards this. And these are the elements of really seriously working towards it, and I pointed out these three here tonight because. I think these are within our realm of moving towards, and that first one is that commitment. The second one is putting together a multi-disciplinary task force made up of. So many people that are here on this call as well as others that, you know, I was hoping we might have public health here tonight and. You know, we'll talk to the DPW, et cetera. as well as others that, you know, I was hoping we might have public health here tonight and, you know, we'll talk to the DPW, et cetera, if we're moving forward on something like this to really get us all together to figure out, as councillor Presniewski was talking about, like, okay, how, you know, how do we move this along? We know what so many of the right things are to do. How can we work across the city to, to get this done? And that would lead into the action plan, which is like, okay, what do we want to do? How are we gonna get it done? And that's, that's a big focus here. And you can see it also takes into, you know, this data-driven approach that a number of you were also like, okay, what's the data on this? What's the data on that? It really focuses on that, the equity piece, community engagement and other elements to, to bring it all together. And one of the big reasons that this is such a great time for us to talk about this is because the US Department of Transportation is like any day now, it's supposed to be sometime this month, going to be coming out with over a billion dollars in annual funding towards these types of efforts. And it's going to go to cities, towns, tribal governments, other regional planning authorities and not, not state level, actually really local level money for doing this type of work. And in particular, it could help us develop, one of the things we could do is start with developing that comprehensive safety action plan. And then once we do that, you know, if, if we're still within this range, we might be able to even go back to that pot for more money and actually putting some of these things into effect. But I think it really would go hand in hand with what we've been doing as a traffic and parking department, police department, a commission and thinking about and even move it that step, that, that further step so that we can really take more action around the city. So with that, I'll stop this share and say thank you all for listening to that. And, uh, you know, I will also mention that I, I wanted to bring this to the, Eric Pepetti worked on this with me. So shout out to Eric. Thank you so much, Eric. And this is yet to go to the full Traffic and Parking Commission. I was hoping to do that sometime soon, but this is a good enough time for us all to start talking about it. But, um, so yeah, this, I, I just consider this a first step. If this is something we're interested in to start thinking about how this might happen. But it's definitely something I'm very interested in because it seems like the way to approach this because it's a whole systems approach. So with that, you know, if anyone has any specific questions about that, I would be happy to take them.
Thank you, Tanya. And the members of the committee have this presentation, but I will have Eileen send out to the rest of the, the council if you're interested in seeing it. So it's, we've already seen it now, but if you want to have it just to look at later, it is a very good concise presentation and definitely a good framework for where we get, this could potentially head in the future. Any, any questions for Tanya or any, any last second thoughts here before we take a motion? Well, thank, thank you, Tanya. Appreciate it. And appreciate the rest of the Traffic and Parking Commission that were here tonight. I think we should have more of these and this will, this may potentially stay in committee. We'll see what the, what the committee wants to do. And then we can continue this conversation. So I guess with that, I'll take a motion. Council of Rola.
Good chair half worth. I would like to make a motion that I recommend this.
Cut out a little bit on my end, but I think you recommended the stay in committee.
Correct.
I would second that councillor Hathaway.
Second by councillor Watson felt. So we have a motion to stay in committee, councillor Verella.
Yes.
Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Councillor Watson felt.
Yes.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
And I am a yes. So we have five members voting, five in the affirmative. Um, and Tanya, do you need to take any sort of a, a motion to adjourn, I guess, on your end?
Um, yeah, yeah, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Right. I just want to make sure, do you want us around officially for?
You, you are free to stay as a panelist for, for the dirt bike. You were not, you were not officially invited to the, to the.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. We will take, and can I have a motion adjourned then from one of our commissioners?
So moot.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Eric Pepetti?
Hi.
Hi, May Garmendia.
Hi.
Lieutenant Tucker.
I will be staying.
Oh, yeah, you, well, you'll be, you'll be hanging out. Great. Not in your official capacity in the Traffic and Parking Commission. And I'm an I as well. The Traffic and Parking Commission is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. And the second matter here is a, a conversation relative to dirt bikes and want to just appreciate Lieutenant Tucker and Chief Miller for sticking around and living in our, our world here for, for a longer than normal government services meeting. But I did want to give you all the, and, and for members of the public that are here, I should have taken public comment on that last one. So we can wrap up public comment into the, into the end of this here. Want to thank you all for just, just joining us here and just sort of give Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker a chance to just sort of discuss what, what we know about some of the dirt bikes that we've seen for those at home who are listening. I'm sure we've all experienced this. These are, these are generally illegal and unlicensed and uninsured dirt bikes that are, I think that, I think we would call them dirt bikes, some sort of a motorized bike that are running through our, our neighborhoods at high speeds, going through crosswalks, causing a lot of sort of just concern among people and, and in some cases terror in some neighborhoods where there, where these, these folks have not been welcome coming through the neighborhoods. And we are, our hands are somewhat tied on these. And I just want to give the, um, the chief a chance to discuss, to, I guess, address that. So I guess just, just as a first question, what do we see, I guess, nationwide? And is it, is it unique to Salem? I think it is not unique to Salem. And then what do we know about the folks that are doing this? And what sort of strategies have we implemented?
So I, I think the first point, uh, which you alluded to is, is that this is not, this is not unique to Salem by any stretch of the imagination. It's a, it's a issue in every, across the country. It was certainly an issue in New York before I left the NYPD and, and remains so. It's particularly frustrating, I think, for citizens who complain about it when we seem, when it appears the police aren't doing very much. And that mostly comes about because we, uh, in many police departments, and particularly in Salem, have a very rigid no chase policy. It's no, you know, I don't think this is a secret that, uh, our policy is unless the violation, the crime that we are chasing somebody for, the escape from that crime represents a greater danger than the than the chase itself, we're not going to chase. And, um, you know, if somebody has committed a significant crime and is riding a illegal scooter, certainly we'll chase them. But the act of committing traffic violations, even, even pretty serious traffic violations does not outweigh the danger that, that, that chasing somebody on a bike like that would, would entail. Police chases, again, it's no secret, tend to end tragically for, for all kinds of people involved. And, uh, and it's really, it's, uh, it's something that I won't bend on as far as, as far as Salem police policy goes. But I, for what it's worth, and again, I, this is no secret, the frustration that a police officer experiences when somebody runs away from him and he's not allowed to chase him is, is momentous. It's, uh, it's, uh, you know, it goes against our, our nature, but it's, uh, but it's a necessary, it's a necessary policy. I think it's also worth pointing out that when we talk about dirt bikes and, and sort of two-wheeled marauders, for lack of a better word, there's a huge spectrum of the people who are doing this. It ranges in some cases on the extreme to gang members from other cities who are kind of making a tour of, of the area and really present a, a, a very serious danger. And then on the opposite end of the spectrum, it is kids on bicycles, you know, behaving, behaving badly. In between are sort of motor scooters and people who are, well, who fall somewhere in the middle. This is compounded because we're really talking about five different kinds of motor vehicles involved. As I mentioned, bicycles, motorized bicycles, that is to say a bicycle with some kind of electric or gas-powered engine that doesn't really change its nature from a bicycle. Motorized scooters, non-highway vehicles, which is to say, uh, you know, dirt bikes, uh, ATVs that are, that are actually motor vehicles, they're just not authorized to be used on the roadway. Something that would, could only be used in the, in the off-road, so to speak, and then actual motorcycles, generally unregistered or with the plates removed. They each, they are each policed a little bit differently, which compounds the problem. But what, uh, and I'll get into our strategy a little bit, but what, what I seek to do in addition to, you know, citing these people for traffic violations is in, in many cases seizing the vehicle. That's not always possible, but, but where we, where we have, where, where we are allowed by law, that's something we'll do. So looking at that spectrum of, of offenders, you know, on the, on the bicycle juvenile side of it, I think that's really a problem to be addressed by education. We put out a letter last week urging parents to clamp down on kids they feel are acting irresponsibly in that, uh, in that realm. And I think that is the most appropriate approach to that, right? We need to, we need to treat kids appropriately, even if they're behaving somewhat bad. And then in the extreme, we've put together a plan with some of the neighboring police departments to utilize state police air wing to to follow them without chasing them, so to speak. And then, as I said, a lot of these offenders don't come from Salem. So using sort of a task force model where officers are not stymied by having to work, having to follow them into a different jurisdiction. Lynn has a gang task force that they've offered to assign this to. And I, I think some of the other departments, notably Beverly and PBD, are, are kind of anxious to participate as well. Last year, and, and, and this is all not to say we're not going to respond. If you call the Salem police and report one of these groups, regardless of what that group is made of, we will respond. And we haven't been totally unsuccessful in citing these people, but I will, I, I went back and looked and we, uh, we were able to seize vehicles five times last year. And, uh, last year we are complaints quadrupled. So you know, I don't, I don't pretend that five successes is going to fix this problem. But it is something that we're, you know, if you call the police, we will come. I anticipate this year, the problem being even worse. We haven't had that volume of complaints yet this year, but the weather is just getting warmer and, and, you know, obviously I anticipate this problem will increase dramatically as the weather favors riding to the vehicles. Turn it back to you for discussion.
Thanks, chief. Before we get into questions, I guess, is there a recommended way that people should respond, that, that, that someone should report this? Or is it, is this, is the data track? I assume the data is tracked somewhere as far as where we're seeing these, similar to the complaints around like fireworks, for instance?
So one of the, uh, one of the ways in which we were successful last year in, in those few occasions that we were was by photographing the offenders. And then if we can identify them through, through the photograph, you know, following up after the fact. So if people want to photograph people doing this, obviously I, I don't recommend a confrontation. But I think a photograph is an appropriate response and we will accept those photographs and, and investigate. The, in terms of, you, you mentioned fireworks. Last year, we, we, we put up on our website a firework reporting tool. And, and I think that's, that is something we're exploring. You know, where we can, where, where we can generate intelligence on the, just the so-called trends of these offenders. I think that'll be useful for us.
Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. I've been a member of the committee to the, through you to the chief. First of all, chief, thanks for being here. Thanks, Lieutenant Tucker for being here. I mean, this is a difficult issue with everything that's going on in the country with regards to policing and, you know, the no chase policy, which is kind of difficult but understandable. The last thing we want to do is OC is, you know, be on, you know, Channel Five News and you know, and have someone yelling at the, the camera crew telling them, don't the police have anything to better to do than to chase my young son around while he's actually just not really doing any. He's not doing a crime. He's just driving around on his dirt bike or whatever. I guess from my perspective as chief, we've had this conversation privately. And I understand that, you know, it's a difficult situation. And I, I know that you, from our conversations, you, the police department is doing what they can with regards to the no chase policy and try to, at the same time, identify these people that are doing this. But how can we help? I guess, because you just alluded to the fact that, you know, I mean, you have, you have someone who's doing this, you know, all of a sudden you detain somebody, you cite them and all of a sudden they get their bike back, their dirt bike back, whatever, whatever vehicle it is that they're being a problematic with is how can we, is there anything on, I, I know a lot of these are state rules. Is there anything on a local level that we can do to help you is obviously is, you know, we've all seen the group of kids that ride their bikes doing pop a wheelies down Derby Street, taking up the whole street, blocking traffic and people beep at them and they don't care. I mean, and I know that, you know, if we could detain them and then, you know, go have, you know, confiscate their bikes, hold their bikes, dirt bike, same way, unregistered. Is there any way that we can keep these vehicles off the streets? I mean, obviously they own them. They're entitled to get them back at some point. But is there any, any way that we can help you to try to extend that period of which they don't get them back so they're not being a nuisance? Because that's what they, they, they're basically being a nuisance. And, you know, it's come to the point where they're gonna be, they're nuisance and God forbid, they turn around and then cause an accident or a crash on, and result in some bodily injury on the other side. So someone who was minding their own business, doing what they were supposed to be doing. And all of a sudden this, because of their actions caused an incident of which now there's something that transpired. And how do we, how do we help you, I guess, is the best, the best question? How can we help you to make, to rectify the situation? Because, I mean, as I usually tell people is the first thing you have to do is report it. And I think that we, we all read the emails relative to, you know, an, an, an individual who called the police department and then was told, well, there's nothing we can do. We'd be told we can't chase them. Take it up with the higher ups. I mean, I think that, you know, we have to be diligent and telling people they need to report. Every time I tell somebody, I'm like, listen, I get that you want to find out what's going on. Before you go to Facebook or some other social media, make the call, let the police know it's happening. And then if you want to go on social media, Facebook and make a comment, then fine, go ahead. I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you, you can't do that. But if we're, if we're finding out after the fact, then we can't help while it's going on. I mean, I, so is there any way, I guess, what can we do to help, to help mitigate the problem or help? And if we do detain some of these individuals, what can we do to prevent them from getting back out on the streets in a rapid manner?
Well, I, I, I think, I mean, let, let me start with the, uh, with that, that report that a, that one of our dispatchers told a, a complaint that there was nothing we can do. That's not appropriate and it's been dealt with internally in the police department. You know, I think from a, from a very basic standpoint, right? We as the police have a responsibility to our, our community that when they call, we come. That's, that seems to be the, the baseline behavior for policing. I, I, we try to do a lot of other things, but, but that is a, that is the bare minimum. We try to do a lot of other things, but but that is a that's the bare minimum we we do. In in terms of changing the law, you know, the our ability to seize these these bikes, whether they're whether they're motorized or 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 not. I don't think the council could have a could extend that. It's pretty much based on. You know, the whether a vehicle is registered or somebody can prove ownership and. I'm unaware that 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 a that a local ordinance would increase our ability to do that. I think where the council can be helpful is to encourage your constituents to continue reporting to. Provide us provide us with that extra information to take pictures. And and to discourage the behavior where where they're aware of it, you know, where it's a friend or a family member. You know, I on the one hand, I don't want to. I I don't want to characterize this as the crime of the century. On the other hand, it it, I think there's no question that it's it's not just serious. But in fact, dovetails with our previous conversation, right? One of the vehicle fatalities we had last last year, last summer was a fellow on a scooter. Who was who was probably riding irresponsibly. But of course, certainly didn't deserve to die as for for a vehicular misbehavior. So I think that's the sort of thing where. You know, extra education, both both on our part and others might help the situation a little.
Council McLean?
Thank you, Chair Hopworth. Thank you, Chief Miller, for for sticking around with us and for all the information that you offered. I'm encouraged to hear that there's coordination going on with some of the other area forces. I've I've had some complaints from some of my constituents about. Some of the bike riders. And in our particular case, it's been. Folks using the conservation area back behind Strongwater Brook and using that to traverse between PB and Salem. They can sort of cut through the trails back there. And obviously, you can't can't really get vehicles back there the way you can get a dirt bike back there. So. I'm sure I'm not surprising you with that information, but it's nice to hear that that PBD is is communicating with you about the situation. I'd like to ask for a little more information if you have it, because I have a lot of folks who are. Reading the news, right? Reading the Boston Globe and. Seeing a lot of the information that's coming out from from further in the urban core about some of the activity they're having with scooters and bikes and. A lot of criminality that's overlapping with that assaults going on, things of that nature, and the rumor mill is starting to get going. And so. I'd really like to know what you are seeing from a fact based perspective. Are we seeing the same sort of overlap? Of bad behavior with actual criminal behavior? Are people using these vehicles to commit crimes? Is 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 there gang activity that's overlapping with these? Or are these really just limited to the behavior on the vehicle itself?
I think the vast majority of the complaints we receive are, you know, not. There is not an associated crime. These are the, you know, some of the reports you see of these people carrying guns and assaulting motorists who object. I I don't doubt that that happens, and I'm certainly, you know, we would take that extraordinarily seriously in in Salem. But fortunately. Most of the bad behavior we've seen in Salem, I think, is is of a slightly less nefarious quality. The 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 reckless driving is the is the the crime here.
Council McLean, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Council Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Hopworth. Not being a member of the committee. Yes, I I agree, of course, you know, with education for the the lesser offenses in regards to this issue. And I had read the letter that was sent out, and I was wondering. Has it been helpful to try to do education through the schools? If you could speak to that. Thank you.
We, you know. Superintendent Zrake and I speak on a regular basis. My sense, we haven't gotten complaints related to the schools, so I haven't I haven't. Haven't pursued that venue yet, but of course, it it's reasonable that there are. You know, that's a good way to get at a number of kids and and while they're paying attention. So that's certainly something we'll we'll pick up.
Any other questions for Chief Miller? Chief, any final thoughts or anything else that you want those listening at home to to? To hear to know about this? I think you covered that pretty pretty in depth, but.
Um, I only, you know, only to reiterate my personal frustration about this. You know, I think. I think videos abound of 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 police officers engaged in in things that they shouldn't. And and one of the reasons why we have pursued a body worn camera policy so aggressively. Is so that, you know, it's not a matter of taking pictures that that literally every every officer will be a. A data collector and a and an evidence collector in that regard. So I I think. You know, I I hesitate to I hesitate to delve into a sort of a Clintonian, I feel your pain, but but I experienced a lot of frustration about this, so it's not something we'll let go of.
Thank you. Council Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair Hopworth. I've I've been really quiet tonight because I think anything that has been said already, it would just be reiterated. Personal stories, reflections, all of that. I will ask. To for reporting incidences or if a photograph has been captured or a video. Is there a dedicated email or a specific person? Is it Lieutenant Tucker that we should be sending these things to? That we can share with our constituents? Or, you know, I know you were saying that that so far you're sort of considering the idea of a hotline like you did for fireworks. But in lieu of that, is there a very, is there a dedicated personnel or or anybody that we should be in touch with?
Um, you know, I think I think as traffic commander, Lieutenant Tucker is is a good spearhead for this. So I I think, yes, that's he and by the way, he's just finding this out, but.
Just thinking I don't get enough emails, so this will be good.
And just to reiterate, so we can share Lieutenant Tucker's contact with our our neighbors if they have these concerns, and we can have them send videos and images to him.
Absolutely. But, you know, why don't I give you the the? The email that 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 comes to my office directly is probably a better catchall for this, which is admin, A D M I N.
Got it.
Salem PD dot net.
For everybody at home.
You can share mine. I do stress mine is DM as in Michael. We have a D Tucker at Salem PD, that's not me. Usually if he forwards my forwards the email to me, but DM Tucker.
Thank you both so much. I think to your, you know, just to reiterate some of the comments made before. When people get frustrated and there's they, oh, God, see, it's always my son's bedtime alert right when I speak online, sorry. That that they are not sure where to go specifically, right? So they call the hotline, they get whoever they get, you know, I just think if there's a way to give them some. Information that says this person is watching this issue, right? This one person or these two people or whatever will be really, really helpful. I think it'll give folks an outlet. To to continue to report and feel like hopefully they're making. They're making some positive impact. I do just anecdotally, I was driving home tonight from Pet Mart, and there were four dirt bikes on Highland Ave behind me, one of which. Riding on one wheel, you know, at a relatively high speed and 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 it and it is scary. It's distracting as a driver, and especially in light of of the recent accidents, especially the one last night on Highland. It's really scary, you know, I don't want any of them to get injured either. So I appreciate this conversation, the whole conversation tonight.
I I should just reiterate, though, you know, if if somebody is reporting activity in real time, it it's appropriate for them to call 911. That's, you know, that that will that will get the fastest response. And, you know, we can. If it's intelligence or photos or or reports after the fact, by all means, use any of the other. Methods, but but we want to know as immediately as possible if somebody if somebody's reporting, you know, activity that's going on at the time.
Thank you. That's really, really helpful. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other final questions? Or statements? I guess, just so if I could, if I could summarize, I guess, what I what I heard and 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 chief, tell me if 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 I got it correct, I think that. For people who want to know about this. It's not that the Salem police are not pursuing or that or that they're not taking these these situations seriously, or that they're not doing anything with them and just saying, like, I can't touch this. They're saying, you know, this is this is something where we're not going to create a more dangerous situation by by pursuing, but we do take this situation seriously. We do. We do take these reports. If you if you see, if you see this happening in your neighborhood, you should call it in. If you have evidence, don't go out of your way to get that evidence. But if you if you have, you happen to have ring camera footage or or anything that sort of shows that that does go somewhere, and then there are people that would look at that. And that it is something that is continuing, and we're working with neighboring neighboring communities. And particularly, I think it was interesting to know that when the Lynn Gang Task Force, I think, is an important one. For those who are concerned. Did I get that right? Is that sort of the message that that folks should receive from us?
That's exactly right, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cohn, do you have a? Question or statement?
I just want to make sure that we open up to the public. I don't know if they're here for this or both or whatever.
Absolutely. And thank you for the reminder. Okay, if there's no other questions from the counselors, open up to the public for both comments, both about the the pedestrian safety we discussed earlier. And the dirt bike situation we discussed now. So if you want to raise your hand if you have a question. And I think that's it. All right, well, appreciate both of you, Lieutenant Tucker and Chief Miller, and thank you all for your feedback tonight. I guess I will take one more. Counsel Cohn?
Thank you, Chair Hopworth. I want to again thank. Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker and the people from Traffic and Parking Staff and. And Commission for staying on and moving to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn from Counsel Cohn. Second by Counsel Verella, all in favor? If five members voting five in favor. Thank you so much, everyone. Counsel Morel.
Do you want to do something with this item?
I'm sorry. Yes, I do need to do something with this item. Thank God. Counsel Cohn? So we.
And ahead of myself. Thank you, Council President. I move that we keep this in committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Counsel Cohn to keep this in committee, seconded by Counsel Verella. Is it I just just under discussion? Is it? Is it something we want to bring back before the the committee? Or are we? Is there additional conversation you're wanting to see around this, Counsel Cohn? We can we can absolutely leave it in committee, or we could discharge it if we wanted to.
Okay, well. I'm somewhat indifferent. Do you have an opinion, Chair?
I per I if it were my personal opinion, I would I would probably discharge this, but Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chan, not being a member of the committee. If you leave it in committee, then if an incident were to occur and it was between council meetings and you wanted to. Take it up, it'd be it would be if the issue of dirt bikes is already in front of you, that way you could take up the issue. In a timely manner without having it, you can just leave it in committee, and they could die at the end of the year.
Yeah.
If there's no action to be taken, then I would just leave it in committee. That would be that would be my suggestion, but I'm not a member of the committee.
I'm going to leave my motion on the table to keep it in committee.
Yep, that makes that makes sense. I just like a clean slate, and I just am never going to get that. Counsel Cohn has a motion to leave it in committee and seconded by Counsel Verella. Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Cohn?
Yeah.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Five members voting five in favor. And then we have a motion, the final another motion. Adjourn from Counsel Watsonfeld, all in favor. Five members voting five in favor. Thank you, everyone.